Thank you, and yeah, I wasn't sure you were still here, and of note, I ran back and grabbed this folder, and I have a pay stub laying on my desk, and it's pink in color. Does that, does that, does that have a significance? Welcome to the open session for January 30th, and as we always like to do, we'll start with pledge allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I apologize that we're starting late. We did have some great discussions, and sometimes we're busy. And I think Commissioner Guerin, it starts with your side today, correct?
I think so. Thank you very much. Good morning, Carroll County. I just wanted to highlight an important date coming up. The Carroll County Public Schools First Responder and Military Career Fair. It'll take place on Thursday, February 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I'm going to encourage everybody watching, get ahold of that young person that you know, and get them to this fair. There's nothing to lose, and I think you would be pleasantly surprised at all the opportunities within our county. It's going to be at the Carroll County Career and Technology Center. Middle and high school students and families and community members are encouraged to attend. You see it up on the screen there. You can explore career and volunteer options in law enforcement, fire, and EMS services, and the military. This is a fantastic opportunity. Unlike when a lot of us were in high school here in Carroll County, you wouldn't imagine maybe making a career here in Carroll County for yourself, but that's certainly an opportunity now. So I would encourage everybody, go ahead and get to that. It's a terrific event. I'm thrilled that they're doing it. I've mentioned before that I am the commissioner member on the Emergency Services Advisory Council, and at the same time, we're also looking at trying to re-energize the emergency tech program, the junior program, if you will, in tandem with some of these efforts. So again, February 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Carroll County Career and Technology Center. Be there. Thanks. That's all for me.
Good morning. Just first and foremost, wanted to mention the obvious thing I think that everybody saw in the news last night, which was the very tragic accident in DC. My heart goes out to everyone, family and friends and everybody involved in that very tragic situation, and something that I don't think any of us had any expectation of having at any point. Apparently, the last time we've had a accident of that magnitude was about 2009 in this country. So just wanted to give prayers to everybody and their families involved, and their friends involved with that situation. Last week, I attended the Care Healing Centers event where they had a documentary on human trafficking. Very well-attended event, very appreciative of all the work they're doing in that. The documentary is a couple of years old, so they did address that at the end. There's some things that had changed from what occurred in the documentary with various things going on in that area of human trafficking, but definitely something that as a community, we need to be paying very close attention to. Sometimes I think what we think that definition might mean is not actually what it can mean. So just wanted to thank everybody that came out in attendance, and also thank them for having that event. Next, wanted to mention coming up on February 6th, at the Carroll Community College in K-100, from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m., we will we will be having an open house for the master plan. Just got to end on this note today. Obviously, there's always a lot of challenging things in life. But I think the one thing we should all try to do today and every day is, you know, uplift those around you. Sometimes the smallest little thing you might do for somebody else might change their day or their week. Just try to be positive and look out for each other. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I certainly associate myself with the comments that Commissioners Garen and Gordon have made so far. I want to focus on a couple of quick reminders myself this morning. So first of all, with the General Assembly being in session, there's a lot of legislation that's being unveiled. And these are things, bills relating to power lines, protecting girls' sports, to local control and choice when it comes to things like Board of Education vacancy replacement selections. I know it can be tough to keep up with sometimes, but there are a lot of good people in Annapolis who are trying to do a lot of good things for us locally, and they need our support. So even simple written statements filed online for or against a particular bill is important. And I want to thank Commissioner Rothstein and Commissioner Kyler for keeping us up to date with everything that's going on in Annapolis, because they're down there every week seeing what's going on. Second, on the note of being involved, the period for filing for intervention against PSEG and their power lines. The Maryland Public Service Commission, as everybody knows, is open. And I found out the other day that the period closes on February 17th. So if you want to intervene, make sure you get registered to do so. And you can do that through the website at psc.state.md.us. Again, that's psc.state.md.us, and it's docket number 9733.
While you're on that, because we're very close to it, we got a letter, and I mentioned this morning that the letter should be shared with Commissioners. I'd like to ask Roberta to make sure that goes on our website, so people can see it in black and white.
That's a great idea.
So thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's a great idea. And speaking of Commissioner Kyler, the third, we're in the season of fire company banquets, events, and other winter activities. And my friend Commissioner Kyler and myself are going to be at some of those this weekend. You know, all of us up here support our volunteer fire companies. And it's important that, you know, if you're able to do so, that you do as well, whether it's attending a banquet, or a crab feed, or whatever it might be, even through the winter. You know, we provide a lot through the county, through the Department of Fire and Emergency Services, but the volunteer companies themselves shoulder a lot of their own costs as well. And supporting them at these events, banquets, carnivals in the summer, you know, it makes a difference. And it's something that we can all directly do to support the people who support our community. And last but not least, and this kind of ties into what Commissioner Gordon was talking about a minute ago. You know, I spoke with a good friend of mine who was in fire and EMS, and he, you know, he was sharing with me on the phone yesterday that this is a tough time of year for people. Loneliness, depression, sadness, suicide. And so if you feel any of these things, you know, do not hesitate to reach out to friends, to neighbors, to family. You know, it isn't weakness. You aren't a burden on anybody. But you do matter. You know, life matters. If you do feel that, you know, life is not worth it, you know, reach out to somebody. Call 988. You know, it's, you know, you matter. Your life matters. I cannot emphasize that enough. You know, you are certainly worth it. And that's all for me this morning, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothstein.
Well, life is good. Couple of things. One, earlier this week, the IAFF sponsored a peer-to-peer training program for fire EMS over at the Training Center, and asked me to provide some opening comments and thoughts and ideas as they kicked off this two-day training. Chief Robinson followed me afterwards. It was a very positive two-day training. And I think they're going to be doing it again. You know, with, I don't know how many were there this time, but my expectation is, you know, it's one of these type of trainings when those that attend see value out of it, they share. And then, you know, two friends tell two friends, and all of a sudden, it's going to be more and more. But the facilitators, one, she came from Ohio, the other from DC. Very impressive, and committed to what they, what they're doing. The second thing, a early happy birthday to Mayor Stacy Link. It's going to be her big 5-0. So happy birthday to her, and thank you for all that you do. This is to her, for Sykesville and the community, and surrounding community. And 50 is not that old.
I think I turned 50 this year.
You turned 50 about five times over the last however many years. So, okay, and then, the third, as shared with us by Commissioner Gordon, they are now in recovery phases of the tragedy that happened last night between the American Airlines and the US Army Black Hawk at Reagan National. Just thoughts, prayers are with those that are, you know, going through that recovery stages. And may the memories of those lost be blessing to family, friends, and the community that knew them well. This is a tough one. You know, because you don't expect, like Commissioner Gordon shared, you just have no expectations that anything like that would ever occur, whether it be the Hilo or the airline itself. So don't want to stop on a downer, but that's what I'm thinking right now. So go back to you, and then I can share some legislation.
Legislature. Okay. Thank you. And I'll, I'll start with that. Commissioner Gordon mentioned the accident down at DCA, and it's tragic. And it's, it's tragic, and like you say, a down note. On an uplifting note, I want to mention, and we'll mention it at the end of the meeting for anybody that's still listening at that point in time. At 1:00 p.m. today, we have our joint meeting briefing discussion with Environmental Advisory Council downstairs in room 003. That's an open meeting. It'll be recorded and streamed. And you're also welcome to be there for it, if you'd like to come and watch. Annapolis, Commissioner Rothstein mentioned, and Pam Meister, and Commissioner Rothstein and I were all down there yesterday, and met some people, and did some Mako stuff. And he'll, he'll highlight some of that later. I did my podcast last week, and this week, I, this month, I did it with the Director of Citizen Services. And I haven't listened to it. I don't know if you do. I don't, I don't even like my own voicemails, so I don't listen. But hopefully, you saved me, and it was a good podcast. We did our Point in Time last week. And it's awesome to go around and talk to some of the homeless. And while Carroll County has many, many, many ways to help them, and, and give them services, it is amazing how innovative and, and hardworking they can be. Some of their shelters are, I'm thinking about asking the one guy, Roberta's not here, I'd do it without a permit, but I'd ask him to come, come do my porch or something. I mean, you could tell he was a carpenter. And it's just, that's an interesting day, and it's great talking to some of those guys. We've been doing some of the governor's updates on, on various things, including the federal grants, and that's been great. I thank their office for what they do. Mako, again, Commissioner Rothstein will talk a little bit more about that. But, but it's, it's so great to get together with essentially all the individual counties in the state. And it's very good representative of, of the state. And, and I didn't think about this, but I don't know what's happening. Our rural county meetings on Monday, not many are participating. And we have, but I think they've only had maybe five of the counties or something.
Five or six, yeah.
They're talking about, is it a better night? Is that a bad night? And they're trying to stimulate participation, and, and that's good. Mentioned fire companies, and Hampstead and Lymanburg, I know are having dinners this weekend. And yes, it's very important that we support them, and they do, they do a whole lot. And we've got county-paid EMS that's doing a whole lot also. But they both are, are part of the answer that we need, and we need to support both. I'd like to mention family, and Rhonda and I spent the weekend with two of the grandsons and her daughter and husband. And it's, this is wrestling season, and we talk about that so much. They're, they're both into basketball right now, and so, and it's, and Carroll County offers a lot of that. It's, it's, you have rec leagues, you have intramural kind of level things, you have countywide things, you have club things. We watched a tryout for a club that, that essentially travels all over the country. And, and to see these kids, this was eighth graders we watched, and then we watched some fifth graders. They have some great skills, and when you get to some of the elite levels, it's, I don't know how coaches decide who to select. When you look at, you know, whatever, a dozen kids show up, they're taking five, and all dozen look to me like they should be high school starters someplace, as eighth graders. And so I don't know how they pick them, but it's great seeing that. And again, we have a great rec and parks here, and we also have club teams, AAU teams, and, and some of that. I'm done, and do legis...
I apologize. And I do have a correction to make. The, the, the Career Fair is February 27th. February 27th, that's a Thursday, not February 7th, February 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00. I wanted to make sure I corrected myself. I'm sure some people are probably pretty displeased with me. February 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, at the Career and Tech Center. And if you need these, use them. I just learned my lesson.
I think you should always be first and last.
That was for the 3,000 people that are listening.
Yes.
At this time.
Yeah, well...
It is the 27th.
Yeah. For 3,000 or 30, we'll take it.
So, yes, and I do like to share also my appreciation to Citizen Services and all those involved and volunteers for the Point in Time on Friday. It was definitely well worth it.
Did you get to talk to some?
Did not. Well, no, I apologize. No, I apologize. We stopped off at a gentleman's residence, and provided medication, but had the opportunity to have a little bit of a conversation. And while we were driving, we were talking to folks that, to ensure that they were accounted for. But, and just for, to finish that out, Point in Time is a nationwide effort to keep accountability of those homeless in our communities. It's done in a 10-day window for the last 10 days of January across our country. And again, it's to ensure that we have the best resources and, you know, abilities and capabilities to take care of our community, especially those in need. Okay, let me go through a few things with Mako with Wednesday. First, first and foremost, it was great having Ms. Pam Meister down with us yesterday. I believe she, her intent will be to be here next Thursday as well for us on the dais, and then also in the community, to help track a lot of the bills, one that we discuss on Wednesdays, but then also other bills that are delegation and are of interest to us in Carroll County collectively. The, again, when there's bills that are subtraction modification, in other words, when a state is mandating direction regarding taxes and revenue, Mako as a whole, Maryland Association of Counties opposes pretty much a blanket in opposition. We don't want the, excuse me, we don't want the state telling us what we must do. We want the county to give, give us the tools to make those decisions. So we oppose collectively from Mako. I won't talk about the internals of the voting within Mako specifically, but I'll give you a feel for how things kind of go. And this is a 100%, you know, when you have everyone opposing. The economic development, there was a economic development legislation that is basically put in by the governor. It's called Decade. I don't have my glasses. It's Delivering Economic Competitiveness Advancing Development Efforts Act. It was introduced by both speakers, in the House and the Senate. We are supporting with amendments. What that does is, if you oppose something, you're basically out of the room. In order to have comments, discussion, engagement, you support the bill and its title with amendments to get you at the table to then further have conversation. So that's what's happening. Another bill dealing with transportation, the highway user revenue, capital grants, we absolutely support that, we here in Carroll County, but also in Mako. There's a few election bills. One of them had to do with ensuring that when election judges are compensated for the work they do, that they actually do the work that they're being compensated for. It's accountability, where election judges can, they, in preparation, do online training, and they get however many dollars to compensate, that they're not just saying they're doing the online training and then get a check in the mail, but they're actually, you know, being certified and being held accountable. So we supported that. There's a education bill, and this is, again, the governor's, like, big initiative bill, where it was introduced by the Speaker of the House and the President of the Senate. Again, we don't agree with all of the, the things that are in this blueprint, as you would expect. But in order for us to have the conversation and be at the table, we, being Mako, were supporting with amendment on that. And much, much, much more to follow on that bill. An interesting one that Mako recommended that we took no position on, and we just provide a letter of information. It's a bill that was introduced by both the House and the Senate that allows for, basically, in my terms, vagrants to use the Office of the Attorney General at the state to file suit against the counties for, you know, being on public property or government property. Personally, I think that's crazy, and I'm not saying that the Attorney General is crazy. But I believe it's way, way over the skis in authorities. And this is where the rural counties do matter. Every rural county, I believe, opposed this bill because we want to govern the way Carroll County, the way counties govern. Many of the large counties wanted no position on this bill and a letter of information. But because it was a split, this is where it matters for us being engaged, because this is, to me, just a bad bill. And I don't want the state telling us what we must do. Give us the tool and toolbox. Let's see. Yes, I don't want to talk about that one. There's a Planning and Zoning, a Land Use, Regional Housing Infrastructure Gap. This is a bill that is focused on the Washington, Baltimore regions that is tying housing and making the calculation between the housing and the workforce to ensure that there's enough housing for the workforce necessary. Again, I'm not a big fan of this. Again, I'm not a big fan of this bill, you know, because I don't want the state telling us you must have this many housing and affordable housing and all that kind of fun stuff. What's interesting is some of the larger counties were saying the exact same thing because there's multiple houses, there's apartments, there's condos, all this kind of stuff. So in order for us to be engaged, again, this is the governor's approach, so it was introduced by the speaker and by the President of the Senate. We're supporting this with amendments to get us at the table and have conversations. But-
Commissioner Rothstein.
Not a fun one.
We like to think Carroll County, we're a rural county and we get that voice in there, but for this bill, we're considered in the Baltimore region, correct?
Correct, correct. And so we're considered right there with Montgomery County, you know, that's looking at the Washington region or Baltimore City. And really, that's who this bill is is targeting and nobody likes it, but in order to make the adjustments, we support it with amendment. A few bills that are of key interest is one requiring each county and the city to update its comprehensive plan to include an electric system planning element for purposes of minimizing the impact of future transmission line development in the state. And we are supporting that with amendment as a whole. There's two bills. One that was introduced by Delegate Pippi, requiring Public Service Commission to examine alternatives to construction of a new transmission line if the use of an alternative will best maintain historical environmental agricultural preservation areas or will avoid any overlap. Excuse me, we're absolutely supporting that. It's the same as the solar energy generating stations we're supporting, which the bill is to prohibit the PSC or Public Service Commission from approving a certificate of public convenience, CP CN, and necessity for solar energy generating station unless the commission receives written approval for the construction of the generating station from each county. So in other words, the bill is telling the PSC, this Public Service Commission, that they do not, they do not or should not have the ability to override county's decision when it comes to putting solar in place. Yeah, that's about all. I mean, there's a handful of other bills. I think we all have this that was sent to us. If you've got any questions on any of it, please, you know, ask and I'll either be able to answer or we'll get Pam to do the the deep dive. There's definitely other bills that are of interest and that's the other thing from you on the dais, my colleagues, but also in the community. If there are bills that there's in question and you come across a House bill or Senate bill or you're getting, you know, hearsay of something, share it. And we will send it to the Maryland Association of Counties staff to do the homework. That's that's an extension of service, you know, for us. They will do the homework and talk with the legislators and do what's necessary so we have the clear picture. It is not working for the big counties or small counties, it's all counties. So that's what I got for this morning.
Okay, and thank you. And and again, just to to emphasize that, if you guys, we're we're not state, we're not in Annapolis, thank heaven, but if you have a question about anything, ask any of the five of us and we will pursue it and 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 there might be something we've missed. So it it can help us.
Hey, just want to share just real quick. We had a meeting, as we discussed earlier, with with the governor. And whether I agree with where the governor wants to go on these bills or not in legislation, I have not had more meetings with the governor and his administration, you know, the prior four years to then when this administration started. Again, it's not whether I agree or disagree, but I'll tell you, he is putting, he's putting his staff out there and he's putting his his team out there and contacting us, which I appreciate because, you know, the only way we're going to have a voice is we're at the table and that's, you know, that that's a good thing. So, okay, sorry about that.
Okay, our next item is a public hearing, 2024 Fall Amendment to the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan. And I'd like to call the public hearing to order and ask Mr. Burke if you can tell us how to stay within the law.
Good morning, Commissioner. If I could take five seconds and introduce our new intern to you, her name is George O'Cam from she from she's a senior from Winters Mill High School. She's with us today. Give us a wave.
Morning.
She's interested in local government and possibly local government law, so she's going to see how the sausage is made this morning.
Thank you and welcome here.
Thank you. She'll be with us for for a couple of months, so she'll be around. The actual purpose of today is to solicit public comment on some proposed amendments to the to the Carroll County Water Sewer Master Plan for 2023. This is an annual event called the Fall Amendments and this year concerns a couple in Freedom, Hampstead and Manchester in the water and or sewer service areas. It was advertised in the Carroll County Times on January 16th and January 23rd. We have some staff with us. We have Adafi Daley and Andrew Gray from Planning. They have a short summary of the changes if you'd like your memory refreshed from a couple of weeks ago, if you're interested.
Okay, and 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 what we're going to do, I think, unless somebody objects, they're going to give us a brief summary of all of this and then we'll open the Florida public comments and any of the commissioners that want to talk and can comment. And today, we're not ruling on this. We will close the public hearing and leave public comments open for 10 days, probably.
Well, you have you have two options. You could adopt it today. This is not one of the ones under state law that you need to keep open for 10 days.
So we don't have to keep it open.
You don't have to. You can adopt it today or you can leave it open for 10 days, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you and thank you guys.
Great, good morning.
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 As Mr. Burke said, we're here for the public hearing on the fall amendment cycle to the 2024 Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan. This was presented to the Planning Commission at two meetings and on November 19th, they certified it as consistent with the master plan. And then, of course, it came back to you on January 2nd for a vote to proceed to public hearing, which is where we are today. So I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Gray, who will just refresh your memory quickly on what the amendment, proposed amendments are, and then we'll take any questions and of course, the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Daley, Mr. Burke, Mr. President and Commissioners, hello.
Morning.
Just to go through really briefly, as Ms. Daley mentioned and Mr. Burke, so why are we amending the plan? To keep the Water and Sewer Master Plan current and also to make needed changes that affect timing of new development in Carroll County. There are three systems.
God bless you.
Bless you. There are three geographic areas, I should say, that we are changing systems to. Number one, in Freedom, the Freedom Water area, the Hampstead Sewer and the Manchester Water and Sewer Service areas. In Freedom, we're moving four residential properties from existing to long range. They are located approximately .3 miles to the east of one along Route 26 from the Liberty Road and Georgetown Boulevard intersection. The reason for this is because there's no reasonable way to connect to water. It's too expensive to connect from the south side of Liberty Road. There's insufficient easements for water and also three of the four lots are developed and all adjacent lots around these four have are connected to water and sewer.
I apologize. Go back to that slide.
Yes, sir.
You said, okay, I see 26. So where where am I looking on 26?
You are looking approximately .3 miles east of where the Oscars Ale House, Arby's, along Liberty Road.
So to to the right of Oscars?
Correct, to towards Baltimore.
Towards Baltimore?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 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 got it.
And for Hampstead, taking property from the future to priority, this is to accommodate, this is for two properties, one to accommodate a proposed tractor supply company and one another use. This is located roughly between the Farmwoods Lane and Greenmount Bowl, Greenmount Station Shopping Center. And lastly, Manchester, these to make 26 changes, 12 map and demand edits and 14 minor map edits and several text changes. And really, these edits with working and collaborating with the town of Manchester are to make the plan relevant to what is currently existing. Where are we now? Just like Ms. Daley mentioned, we were here before you all on January 2nd to request for a public hearing. Today, as Mr. Burke mentioned, we, after the public hearing is concluded, either to keep the record open for 10 days and then come back before you or for this for for the Board of County Commissioners to approve the mass the amendments to the master plan with taking all evidence and testimony into consideration. After the Board of County Commissioners approves these changes, the adopted amendment will be sent to Maryland Department of the Environment for final review and approval. So our recommendation, staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners conclude the public hearing and keep the record open for 10 calendar days or request the Board of County Commissioners adopt the Fall Amendment to the 2023 Water and Sewer Master Plan after taking all evidence and testimony into consideration. Thank you and if anyone has any questions, I am here.
You mentioned it, but all of this is Carroll County staff, but also in conjunction with each local jurisdiction discussion with them, they're all aware of this and all in favor.
Yes, sir.
And do we have any callers?
I have no callers on the line.
Do we have any cards for public speakers here? Is anybody, if anybody's interested, you need to fill out a card and give to Roberta and can speak, so. Okay, Commissioners, any comments or questions?
I do still have a question about the amendment. So moving four residential properties in Eldersburg where you show to long-range future water service. Is the long-range future water service properties identified?
Yes, yes. The the right, these these four properties right here would just be those four.
Well, those four, we're taking, I just want to make sure I'm clear. We're moving the four residential properties from existing water service to long-range. Why are we doing that?
Great question, Commissioner. And the reason for that is because within collaborating with the Bureau of Utilities here, there was just no reasonable way to connect. And I know how it looks, it's right in the middle of existing, but with running a pipe under 26, under that road, taking it the distance up that driveway and also in the rear, there are easements, but those easements aren't sufficient enough from what Bureau of Utilities is mentioning to me to accommodate that water line because and I'm almost 100% positive, some of those easements in the back also have sewer lines and the conflict with water and sewer and nobody would would want that. But with discussion with Bureau of Utilities and discussion internally in the Department of Planning and Land Management, it was determined that this was the best course of action forward for these four properties.
And and these properties are in an enterprise fund, so if the county would run utilities to four residents, it would, in theory, everybody using water and sewer in the Freedom area would pay for it, correct? No?
No. So if they're not connected currently.
Yes, yeah, they're not connected.
And if they were to be connected, they they pay for the connections, yeah.
They pay for the connections, but that wouldn't cover boring under 26 and all that would, oh, that would, the connection fee that you can charge enough for a connection fee to cover all that? Okay, okay, good.
If so, from what I remember, if a line is available, then aren't they directed to connect or can they still maintain? They would have to connect.
If this were a brand-new development.
Right.
Or we were put extending water sewer to this area, there's no, there's no water sewer to this area.
Right.
It's across, it's on the south side, yeah, south side of 26. So if we were doing it, yes, they would be required and then and then they would just have to pay from the street to their house. But this, if they were to connect, they'd have to go all the way from 26, under 26 and over to wherever, however far they are.
And I think you said it, that these are occupied with private septic and well and evidently doing okay.
And we have a, the Water and Sewer Master Plan really only requires us to provide three, three horizons for water and sewer. It's existing priority and future. We use a long-range future as a fourth category, so they're not completely cut out of the possibility of having water and sewer at some point in the future, but it's, but it's fairly distant a possibility because of some of the logistical things that Drew mentioned, the cost, the the tech, the logistics of of extending that.
My assumption has always been when I saw, and I've seen scenarios like this, is that by removing something from W1, you're providing capacity to somewhere else within the system. Is is that accurate?
It it sort of depends on, well, so the calculations build on each other. So W1 is saying we're providing or there there is some sort of capacity that's been reserved for them. But it all is is sort of cumulative. So we we forecast out for that whole service area that goes through future. That's where our real, where our real inflection point is in terms of whether we're exceeding our our-
Okay.
-capacity or not, but but we do reserve some capacity for homes that are not currently connected but are in the existing service area. By moving them to long range, you're right, we are kind of freeing up some of that, some of that capacity that's kind of assumed to be reserved.
And that all makes sense to me, so, okay, thanks.
I will make a motion to conclude the public hearing and keep the record open for 10 calendar days.
Second.
Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion in a second. Any further questions or discussion?
Why don't we just approve this? I mean, what what's the 10 days going to achieve for us?
Well, maybe somebody has a question in the meantime or maybe they watched the presentation today, but they're not prepared to comment or.
Okay. And so to clarify, the the motion is to leave leave public comment open for 10 days and at a later date after the 10 days, we would then vote on accepting it or not, correct?
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval to submit application, acceptance of award for coordinated community supports, partnership, capacity building grants.
Good morning.
Morning.
And Celine, I've already gotten, and and I don't know what yet, but this morning I did get a phone call based on our podcast and the number I gave out, so I may need help, but maybe I'll be able to answer it.
It was a crank call and I did it.
I'm sorry. You weren't supposed to admit it.
You weren't supposed to admit it. Now we know, so.
Wait, did you say prank or crank?
Anonymous signed it.
All right, well, thank you Commissioners for having us here today. We are, Celine Steckel, the Director of Citizen Services. I'm joined today by Ed Singer, our Local Management Board Manager. We also have Cory Hardinger, our Grants Analyst, with us today, as well as Maria Lowry, who is our Local Care Team Coordinator. She's in the audience with us. And I'll let Ed do another special introduction a little bit further into our presentation. But we, we are here today, as you noted, seeking approval to submit application and acceptance of the award for the Coordinated Community Supports Partnership Capacity Building Grants to HUBs and approval to hire recommended staff contingent on the grant award. In December, the State of Maryland Community Health Resource Commission issued a call for proposals for spokes to provide behavioral health and related services and support to students and their families. And this CFP also included an opportunity for communities without HUBs to apply for capacity building. HUBs coordinate service delivery by the spokes, act as a fiduciary by managing funding from the Maryland Community Health Resource Commission, awarding grants to spokes as sub-grantees, and then collecting and reporting data related to the performance of the program. We had made application last year in November of '23, a little over a year ago, for the HUB pilot program. However, there were a limited number of awards that were going to be going out because it was a pilot at that time, and we did not receive one of those awards. However, the MCHRC is now providing funding to build HUB capacity in jurisdictions not previously served. And that's where we're coming in for application again today. And I'll let Ed take it from here and give an overview of the program.
Just real quick, before we get into that and unrelated to the briefing today, I want to introduce Addison, who is with us. She's gonna be our new enough program, she's the Community Engagement Coordinator. So you're gonna be seeing her a lot out in the community, especially in Westminster and Union Bridge, where the Board approved us to apply for and receive a grant through the Governor's Initiative with the engaging neighborhoods, organizations, unions, governments, and households to essentially try to end child poverty and allow for more economic mobility in these communities. So Addison's gonna be our lead on that. I'll be presenting at both the Westminster and Union Bridge Council meetings coming up in February, and Addison will be with me there, but she's gonna be going out and engaging the community and other organizations to talk about how we can have an impact on the, on child poverty in our community. So we welcome her to the LMB team, and I wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to introduce you to you as the Board of Commissioners.
So at the end, so at the end of the day, it'll be her face outward and not yours.
I'll be in the background.
Oh, my goodness. Which is not a bad thing, you know?
No.
But you do have a sharp haircut and it kind of makes me feel shaggy right now, so, okay.
And can I just add that Addie brings a lot of experience with her because she formerly had worked with the Partnership for Healthier Carroll County with the Needs Assessment Process and other facilitation of group meetings and town halls and focus groups. So really, she's hit the ground running already, and she's only joined our team for the past few weeks, not even a few weeks, week and a half. So we are excited to have her on board with us. It was a great find.
And we talked about you during Point of Time. Evidently, Mr. Singer is now a certified diver. I guess your presence here means the dives were successful.
Some more successful than others because there was actually, we had a couple of days where there was not great weather and it was, it was harder than I initially anticipated. But we, my daughter and I got through, you talk about family. It was great to spend time with my daughter and go get dive certified, so.
We talked about you anyway.
That's great. Anyway, back to this program through the, through the Consortium for Coordinated Supports. We were here and presented to you, Celine said, before about a year, year and a half ago. Essentially, what this would do was, right now, the, there's a grant program that provide wraparound services and behavioral health supports through the state, through the blueprint, that essentially the, we get together with the school system and the Health Department and make recommendations as to what should be considered in Carroll County. And the state right now is making the decision on, on the programs that are gonna be selected for Carroll County and ultimately, they're overseeing those programs right now. What this does is it gives us the opportunity to directly be involved in selecting the programs along with the school system and the Health Department and our community partners as to what's needed here in Carroll County, and then we would have the direct oversight. And essentially, what we'd be doing with this capacity building grant is we would be bringing on a program manager who would, would learn what the process is in order to be able to oversee this program. And the, we'd be expanding Maria's hours in helping to collect the data and do what we call referrals, referring potential clients to the services that would be available through this, through this consortium program. So it gives us more direct control, gives us the responsibility for doing what's being done at the state level. The model is, is to have these hubs in jurisdictions so that, so that we have oversight and everything would be coordinated at the state level, but would be run more directly here at the local level with us and collaborating with our community partners. So that's essentially how the, how this program would work. The first year is capacity building where, where it's basically a learning community for the first year. And then the second year, we actually get into selecting HUB grant, I mean, spoke grantees, which are the providers, and overseeing those spokes. And we'd be doing that in cooperation with the Health Department's, local Behavioral Health Authority, who has the technical expertise to oversee behavioral health programming, so.
So I, I'm sorry, I apologize. So the position that you're seeking to hire the HUB coordinator says it's a new full-time position. Is that entirely grant-funded?
It would be, and it's state funds. And right now, there's debate is the, I know there's not enough money in Annapolis right now, and there's debate about, you know, where the money's ultimately gonna go. So, you know, whether we receive this or not depends a lot on what happens with the, with the legislature and budget decisions that'll be made at the state level. But we felt like we needed to make, take the opportunity to apply because we felt like we wanted the local control over what was going on here in Carroll County.
Oh, completely understood. I'm just making sure I understand the financial ramifications of this. So the, the last line of the background, third paragraph, last line says, "A future proposal will include funding for program monitoring and fiscal support." What does that mean?
So what that means is that the, the way this is envisioned is the first year, as I mentioned, is a learning community. The funding would, would all come through the consortium. We, we'd have to, the way that this worked for the HUB pilots was they had essentially a year and a half of learning, and then they applied again and, and put into place pieces. Right now, since we're not overseeing the, the providers and we're not selecting the providers, there's a piece of this that we don't need yet. And essentially, the state would need to fund additional staff in order to, to go out and do program monitoring and oversight on the, on the programs that are being done through the consortium.
And that would be.
It would be no impact on county funding. This would all be another process for us to go through. We'd come back and appear here before you again and, and ask to submit for the, for the full program once, once we've gone through the learning process.
And just one last question. How long does this pilot program last?
It's a, it's a fiscal year that the initial pieces, and then we'd have, if, you know, if this continues to move forward the way that it's envisioned under the blueprint, we, we would be reapplying to become a full, what they call, community partnerships grant and be responsible for the programming here in the county.
Thank you very much.
And just to further clarify, just because even though we were not selected as a HUB last year, we did have spokes that were selected that are working within our school system now with their programs. So, and the state was overseeing those hubs. So it is active and it is up and running, and it's been, and there have been some successes. One of the programs that's operating now is a current program that, that looks at students that have not been in the school system, a truancy program, if you would, and doing targeted outreach with behavioral health and other supports at home with those students to try to reengage them and have them come back into the school system. And then another program is run by the Boys and Girls Club as well. So those are the two providers that are spokes currently, and we would anticipate that there will be other spokes that will come in for this next year as well. So we have talked with the school system already about those, those potentials and future applicants, but right now, we are not the ones that are selecting them, right? Those applications in, with support of a letter of support from the, the school system as well as from us and the local Behavioral Health Authority, you know, a mix of those, but the school system has to provide a letter of support in order for the application to be considered by the state. That's how the process is working now. We would like to be able to vet those proposals collectively here in Carroll and have our input, and that's why we think it's important for us to apply to be that HUB. Because right now, we don't have that opportunity. They're selected by the state.
Makes sense.
The other piece that I would add is, this is a really good fit, I think, for the Local Management Board because as I look at my job, when I talk to people about what I do, they're like, what's a Local Management Board? And I said, well, I like to look at my job as being, trying to help our young people become successful adults. And that's, that's kind of how I see things. There's a lot of coordination that we do at that level, and this is another opportunity for us to, to find ways to help young people who might otherwise be struggling be able to become successful adults and contributing members of our society.
Thank you.
Maestris.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the submission of the HUB grant application and accept the award, including hiring of recommended staff.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Now, Spending Authority inmate medical services.
Good morning to both of you.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office requests Spending Authority approval to spend up to, but not to exceed $109,771.24 for onsite medical services for individuals incarcerated in Carroll County Detention Center for a month of January 2025 to Prime Care Medical, Inc. Payments will be made utilizing Cecil County's RFP that was competitively bid. The funds are approved in the fiscal year '25 budget.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's our payment for the January services, so we're before you just to get that approval to make the payment.
Motion to approve spending authority for onsite medical services for Carroll County Detention Center inmates for January 2025 to Prime Care Medical Incorporated in the amount of $109,771.24.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is this typical? Is this average or high, low, or?
That's our average, that's our cost per month for these specific services.
So it's consistent?
Yes.
So why do we do it month to month and not for an annual?
So we have to make the payments. We get billed monthly for the services. That's how the contract's set up. Right now, we're coming before you because of the new process that we have to get approval to do this. It's on-term contract. So you never would see us, you wouldn't, you weren't seeing us for this before. These were just payments were made, so.
But this is just for January 2025?
Correct, one month.
So are you gonna come to us the end of February doing the exact same thing?
Probably.
And we can't give you the authorization to spend X amount of dollars and then you execute it month to month?
Um, we've worked with budget on that, but it's, there's, there's other pieces to this. So this is the one bill that we're paying now. Overall, there's other pieces that are not fixed. So this is the one piece that's a large amount, and because it's over the $25,000, we need to come to get approval for you, from you.
Yeah, but I understand, I just, I mean, I just don't understand the mechanics of, we can approve much higher, but then why not throughout the year you just execute?
This is one piece of it. This is one bill of all of the services. So overall, it's not, so this is the one piece that's fixed, so we're, we need to pay this bill.
I, I get that, I understand. I just, when you say one piece, now you're saying we're piecemealing something.
The other bill, the other invoices aren't the same amount every month. And they don't, they all don't total over a higher amount. So it's basically not bundled together, is what we're saying. That's not able to come up with an exact amount to be bundled together. So this is the one piece that has a set amount, and it's over the threshold.
I'm trying to make this easier. I'm trying to make this like, so it's not.
I know.
A monthly issue.
We could talk internally and see if there's something else we can do.
Because if, you know.
Streamline somehow.
Yeah, I feel like we should be able to, but, yeah, if you can, thanks. Yeah, I mean, this is all, I'm, I'm thinking good, I'm thinking more efficient, not, you know? Okay, not that I don't want to see you every month, but, okay. I'll move the Board of Commissioners. Approve the spending authority for onsite medical services for Carroll County Detention Center inmates for January 2025 to Prime Care Medical Incorporated in the amount of $109,771.24.
Second.
Didn't, wait, I made, I, didn't I just make a motion?
Did you?
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I made a motion.
You already had, yes.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, I was like, wait a.
So it's double motion. You're not getting $218,000.
And the good news is, yours was identical.
That's true.
Any further discussion or questions?
I was like, wait a second, what's going on here?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Lord of the Flies.
Now, approval to purchase for fire EMS.
Morning.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Fire EMS requests your approval to purchase one LifePak-35 cardiac monitor, defibrillator, and accessories from Stryker Medical in the amount of $53,706.40. This purchase will be made utilizing the Maryland State Contract. This amount is approved in the fiscal year '25 budget.
So the Board of County Commissioners previously approved the acceptance of this award from the cardiac devices grant through the state. Now, because we're going to purchase it and the amount involved, we're here to request the ability to purchase that. So this is a matching grant, so MEMs will reimburse us basically half of that cost. The rest will be the county, and it's been approved to the budget.
Commissioner Rossin, you want to take the honors on this one?
Actually, no.
No?
But he'll do it after you do.
Motion to approve the purchase of one LifePak-35 cardiac monitor, defibrillator, and accessories from Stryker in the amount of $53,706.40.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
Just great job this week, that peer training. Thank you for the invitation.
Appreciate it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
See some of you Saturday.
See you Saturday.
Now, JCI contract quarterly payments with Public Works and Bureau of Facilities.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Facilities requests your approval to encumber funds for emergency management control services for Carroll Community College to Johnson Controls per our term contract in the amount of $76,122. This will encumber funds for the remainder of fiscal year '25 budget, and this is approved in the fiscal year '25 budget.
Morning, Commissioners. Johnson Controls has been supplementing the Bureau of Facilities preventive maintenance program for over 20 years out at the college. They provide maintenance to all the large-scale assets such as chillers, boilers, cooling towers, heating, cooling pumps, and controls. All the contract allows Carroll County to optimize the building performance, which at the end saves energy, building performance standards go up. We save money in the long run. These, these pieces of equipment are technical, and we don't, we don't have the, the staff that has that technical experience. So we've been dealing with Johnson Controls, who does for past 20-plus years. And this is just strictly for the college contract that we have with them.
Motion to approve the encumbrance of funds for Energy Management Control Services to Johnson Controls per term contract number 12143 in the amount of $76,122.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, furniture for Department of Public Safety.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Facilities requests your approval to purchase furniture for the Department of Public Safety office at the Library Headquarters in the amount of $47,496.96 to Duron Incorporated. This purchase will be made via mapped contract, and this amount is within the fiscal year '25 approved budget.
Commissioners, Department of Public Safety is currently housed in office space at both County Office Building and over at New Windsor, the old New Windsor School at Library Headquarters. The purchase and the install.
The purchase and the install of this furniture will allow to consolidate all the Department of Public Safety into one location, creating a more cohesive work environment for all staff, and this purchase will include the cubicles, the desk, and also the install as well.
So just, I guess, one quick question. So the idea is to consolidate everybody into the one building. What becomes of the space that's vacated?
That's yet to be talked about, but I'm sure it's going to be used within the county office building here. Whether it's which department gets the office spaces, that's yet to be determined.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of furniture for the Public Safety office at the library headquarters to Doron Incorporated in the amount of $47,496.96.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roberta, there is a committee that evaluates-
Space committee.
-space in this building, and they will take care of it.
And my only question, we're not shortchanging. We're not, you know, making shortcuts on the furniture or-
No, Commissioner.
We're meeting their needs.
We met with the end users, Valerie and her team, and walked a couple times through the space. Met with the Doron. They designed it per their spec, so which they're going to get is what they need.
Okay, just, you know, retaining, training and retaining is so important in this workforce, and specifically in this workforce, comfort goes a long ways sometimes. So want to make sure that they are getting, you know, the appropriate needs.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
So again, and this is the, this is the furniture and the installation?
The partitions, the walls, the desks, the conference table, the chairs. Right now, currently, the space that they're going to convert to an office setting is a large, open conference room. So Doron's going to come in and install some walls and some doors. We're going to lay carpet in, get a nice conference table in there for them to do their work that they need to do at that location, instead of just throwing them in there, you know, sitting on a desk, make it a little more professional for them.
Do the reconfigure of people's workstations and communication drops and all those types of, is that included in this, or is that something that we have to come back in and do later?
The communication drops are already there from years ago when we outfitted that swing space side, so we got plenty of IT data over there. But IT will play a part in it, getting the wires pulled from where they need to get it to the power poles for the cubicles.
Is that something we do in-house, or do we, okay, good.
Well, with our contractor, Marathon.
Yeah.
I'm not sure which you would use.
And sometimes they do it in-house, but usually Marathon, the contractor, will run that for them.
Okay, thank you.
They're here so often, I think of them as in-house.
Right. I think Valerie's here. If you have any operating questions, now she's going to use that space.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment callers?
Dare I say, we do not.
Okay.
Please, Dan.
We have no one here. Admin session open. And does somebody want to make a motion about?
Yeah, go ahead.
Intervening.
Intervene.
Yes.
Give me a second, Anna.
Doesn't, just-
Motion to intervene at-
Just to, motion to direct the county attorney to intervene in the, in the Public Service Commission process for the Maryland Piedmont Reliability Project.
I will make a motion to direct the county attorney to intervene at the Maryland Public Service Commission against the Piedmont Reliability Project and PSEG. Is that sufficient?
I think so. Tim? Tim?
Mr. Burke.
Does that work for you? Okay.
Was that sufficient? Second.
We have a motion and a second, and there is a deadline for this, and that's the reason to bring this up today, and there's a lot of things forthcoming on how we're going to do it and whether we're doing in conjunction with others and all that, but this gets our foot in the door, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Wanda, I guess we're ready for agenda review unless somebody else has, no other open session, right?
How are you, Wanda? Nice to see you again so soon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Look, Lord of the Flies.
Okay, Monday, February 3rd shows open. Tuesday, February 4th, Boys and Girls Club Legislative Breakfast in Annapolis, Commissioners Kyler and Rossing. On Wednesday, 9:00 AM, Tax Subcommittee for Mako, Commissioner Rossing, Education Subcommittee Meeting for Commissioner Kyler. At 9:30, the entire legislative committee meets, and for the record, that can be live in Mako or that can be virtual, and I don't think we've really said which way we'll do it yet, but either way, we'll be in Annapolis. 11:00 AM is the State of the State address and luncheon following that, Commissioners Kyler and Rossing. At 6:00 PM, Planning and Zoning, Commissioner Gordon. On Thursday, 8:00 AM, closed admin, 9:00 AM, open session. During Priority Carroll, there will be a Marriage Week proclamation. Legislative update with Ms. Pam Meister, our legislative liaison. Next item, update of county master plan progress. Next item, approve the purchase, mobile command router and satellite upgrades. Next item, approval to purchase chain analysis government solutions software. Next item, spending authority, household hazardous and waste event services. Approval to purchase three Ford Explorers, contract renewable managed services. Public comment, admin open, agenda review. At 1:00 PM, Master Plan Open House for District 3, which is the one you mentioned in Priority Carroll, and Commissioner Gordon will be there. 6:30, Taste of Maryland Agriculture at, in Hanover, Maryland, at Live Casino and Hotel, Commissioners Kyler and Rossing. On Friday, February 7th, at 6:45 PM, Cub Scout PAC 665 Meeting, Commissioner Kyler. And the Cub Scouts want to talk about local government, and it'll be interesting evening. Saturday shows open. Sunday, says Commissioner Garen has the podcast.
During an open session, the Priority Carroll, the Magic, or Marriage Week proclamation, why are we doing that? I mean, there's other nonprofits for the good of the community. I mean, is this something?
We've done it each year since I've been here.
I know, and I'm just, I know we have.
And they ask, and-
I mean, why not just give them a certificate and say, "Thank you for your services"?
Well, I would say that it has-
I don't know.
Well, my thought on the matter is that, you know, you talk, it's not just marriages, they do talk about that group, it also is about healthy relationships, and everything that we've talked about today with these centers for women rehab facilities, all of these things factor into a sociocultural context where we're trying to build a healthier society, and an organization like this offers their services for free to people. They can go in, they can take classes, they can get help. It's just, it's another way for us to build strength among community members.
Then, okay, in that case, what I'd like to do is open it up to every other nonprofit in the county that provides these type of services.
And I haven't read it, Vivian could tell us. On our website, there is procedures and qualifications or whatever the right term is for when we do proclamation, when we do a certification, or whatever else we do, and I know this group has asked, and they evidently meet the guidelines.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm definitely not-
Anybody else can ask too, and then, and then, a lot, which could be our option too, I'm taking one to Hampstead Fire Hall on Saturday for their 125 years, as opposed to them coming in here. I'm doing that in front of their whole participation at that night.
And I do the same.
So, yeah, yeah.
I don't disagree, and I'm not, you know, against this organization, I'm just pointing out that it's an organization amongst so many others that are serving, you know, whether it be marriage, relationship, you know, sobriety, whatever you just, you just shared. I'm like, that's fine, but, you know, that's all, I'm just-
Wanda encouraged me to pay attention that morning, so I don't know what to do.
I don't know, but, okay.
No, it's a good point, and, yeah, we, people ask, and some are told they don't meet the criteria, some are here, some are at their event, and we do a lot of these.
Yes, almost everyone that asks, really. There are some that we don't, but mostly the ones we do, don't do are because they don't have a nexus to Carroll County. We get a lot, oh, from, you know, Podunk Utah, you know, "My grandmother's turning 100, and I'm trying to get a proclamation from every," you know, no. You know, things like that, we don't do. So they have to have a nexus to Carroll.
Okay, I just then would like to, as we recognize this, for all the right reasons, ensure that other nonprofits in our county, in our community that serve, have the ability to, you know, have proclamations if appropriate.
If they ask.
That's all. I'm definitely not taking away from this, I'm just saying there's others that are out there, so.
Yes.
Some take advantage of the opportunity and some don't.
Yep.
Okay. The second week, Monday, February 10th, Westminster City Council meeting, Commissioner Gordon. Tuesday, Ag Center Board Meeting, Commissioner Kyler. Wednesday, February 12th, 9:30, Farm Museum Board Meeting, Commissioner Vigliotti. 9:30, Tax Subcommittee, Commissioner Rossing. 9:30, Mako Education Subcommittee, Commissioner Kyler. 10:00 AM, Legislative Commission, Mako for both commissioners. At 4:00 PM is the Board of Education meeting, which, and I don't know if everybody noticed, I'm not sure who instigated it, but they have changed their meetings from 5:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and were invited every, every meeting. On Thursday, 8:00 AM, closed admin, 9:00 AM, open session. Priority Carroll National Entrepreneurship Week proclamation, Department of Economic Development. Legislative update, Fall Amendment to the Carroll County Water and Sewer, and that's two weeks later, so we've left the public record open if anybody's interested in commenting, and we'll approve or deny that day. Second quarterly budget update, Maryland Veterans Trust Fund Grant. Public comment, agenda review. Friday, Saturday show, no activities, and Commissioner Rossing gets to record himself on the podcast. Any additions or changes? Thank you, Wanda. So now, I need a motion to adjourn until 1:00 PM. Do we, do we say we're ending it after that, or we do that downstairs?
You do it downstairs.
Yeah, okay, so we just need a motion to adjourn until 1:00 PM.
Motion to adjourn or to recess?
Say again.
I'm sorry, adjourn or recess?
Recess.
Okay.
We get to go up and play.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I'll make a motion to recess until 1:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and thank you.